This meeting of the Rolling Meadows City Council is hereby called to order. Would everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this soul with liberty and justice for all.
It was tight. Did you have a good party, Eddie?
The clerk will please call the roll.
Cannon.
Here.
Prina.
Here.
Majikis.
Here.
Judd.
Here.
Baner.
Here.
Diestis.
Present.
Beanbass.
Oh, Beanbass is not here.
I think he's still expected, so with six present at the moment...
He's not gonna be...
Oh, he's not?
No, he's down in Missouri.
I'm sorry, I forgot that, and he did say so. So that is correct. With six present this evening, there is still a quorum present. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. The first item on the agenda this evening is a motion to approve two sets of minutes, the March 17th Committee of the Whole Meeting and the March 24th Council Meeting. The Chair asks unanimous consent to consider both sets of minutes in one motion. Is there any objection? Hearing none, then such a motion would be in order. Is there such a motion? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to either set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall both sets of minutes be adopted? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and both sets of minutes are adopted. The next item on the agenda is some of the good news that we get to do here. We have three swearings in this evening, one for an officer and two for sergeants. Therefore, is there a motion to deviate for those three swearing ins? Mr. Prina has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the council deviate to do three swearing ins? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and will deviate from the agenda for that purpose. So, I'm gonna take the walking, talking microphone here, and just kinda swing around. And as I do that, Officer Jason Calverisi, will you come forward, please? It's not often that I get to swear a brother Marine into anything, but he's not just a brother Marine, he's a brother field radio officer, 2531, 29 stumps, ooh baw, absolutely. So, I think it's fantastic to bring a brother from the Marine Corps around. So what I'm gonna ask you to do, is I'm gonna ask you to take the microphone in your left hand, so that you can raise your right hand, and repeat after me. Aye, Jason Calverisi.
Aye, Jason Calverisi.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all the laws and ordinances.
And all the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And that I will perform the duties.
And that I will perform the duties.
Of the office of a police officer.
Of the office of a police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I heard, ah, okay, Mom is gonna pin tonight? Excellent, or put the badge on, correct? I was...I learned that last time. We get pins, they get badges. Next up, Sergeant Dan Cook, will you come forward, please? Dan has not only been one of our investigators, and more recently, the officer in charge up there, but he was also selected to be part of the major case assistance team in helping out with that work, which is, which is quite a plum assignment, I can tell you. And, Dan, I guess I would say, my guess is, 13 or 14 years ago, was a good enough sport to take a fairly new and rather gabby alderman out on one of his first ride-alongs, riding around in the dark, listening to this guy talk his ear off, and ask a bunch of questions. So he's also a good sport. So, Dan, if you wouldn't mind, I'm gonna ask you to take this microphone in your left hand, so that you can raise your right, and please repeat after me. Aye, Dan Cook.
Aye, Dan Cook.
Having been appointed to the office of police sergeant.
Having been appointed to the office of police sergeant.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all the laws and ordinances.
And all the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And that I will perform the duties.
And that I will perform the duties.
Of the office of a police sergeant.
Of the office of a police sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir. And finally, Sergeant Tony Paluso, will you please come forward? In his time with the previous department and here, there are very few police positions that I think Tony hasn't served in, and most recently, he's been the president of the Police Union as well, and we've appreciated his leadership there. And I think one of the neatest things is service on the Police Honor Guard, that group of folks that really lends so much extra dignity and so much extra oomph to the things like the veteran ceremonies that we do and so forth and so on. And I can tell you personally, that when they have that whole Buckingham Palace Guard routine that they have to do, if you try to get him to laugh, he's not budging. He doesn't smile, he doesn't laugh, and that's either because he's very good, or it just reflects the fact that I just ain't funny, and it probably could be either one. So, Tony, if you wouldn't mind, please take this microphone in your left hand, so that you can raise your right, and repeat after me. Aye, Tony Paluso.
Aye, Tony Paluso.
Having been appointed to the office of police sergeant.
Having been appointed to the office of police sergeant.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all the laws and ordinances.
And all the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
Of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And that I will perform the duties.
And that I will perform the duties.
Of the office of a police sergeant.
Of the office of a police sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So at this particular time, we've learned that it's a great opportunity for just a little bit of extra picture-taking up here with the background of the SEAL and so forth and so on, so we traditionally say, we're just gonna pause for a few minutes here for any extra pictures, and for people to make their way out if they're not really interested in
Would you control your council?
There's chocolate raining, girl.
It's raining chocolate.
Might need to start banging this camel again. So, with the festivities finished, and all the swearing-in of police officers done, the council can move on to its business this evening. Under reports, under the Mayor's report, I just have a brief update, that's a fairly pleasant one. You might recall that during one of the previous ward reports, I had mentioned that with the state action that they took recently to take care of their current budget as opposed to the one that's coming, we had an exposure of roughly between zero and about $75,000 that we were probably going to have to eat because of their actions. We came down slightly below half of that. It should be roughly around $30,000 of monies that we were expecting from the state that we've been told not to expect. And so, all things considered, it's not awful. And again, the Northwest Municipal Conference, as well as municipalities across the entire state under the Illinois Municipal League, as well as just about every school district and park district and everybody else, is working very hard to try to see what can be done about the upcoming budget, so we'll keep you informed as far as that goes. Are there ward reports this evening? Mr. Prina, the second ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of points. The area of Adam Street, Vermont Williams, they've been replacing the mains there. We've had a few weeks of upheaval, but I'm told by our Public Works Director that things will be under control shortly, so I thank him for fielding questions. Also, we had the residents from Gettysburg who have had a number of trees that have been cut down because of our emerald ash, and we're working with Public Works to see what we can do about getting those up and running. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further ward reports? Seeing none, there are also no signatures on the sign-in sheet this evening, therefore the council can proceed straight to its ordinances and resolutions. The first item there is a single ordinance that is in for second reading, is Item A. This ordinance, if adopted, would amend a previously approved plan for a new parking structure at Continental Towers. The three amendments proposed would expand the structure by 11 feet on each side, allow for a fifth floor if the property chooses to move forward with creating one, and grant a variance for certain areas that cannot meet the requirement of no more than six inches of temporary standing water during a large storm. The Plan Commission considered this request and unanimously recommended its approval. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Prina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have had some inquiries and some questions about this. There will be a parking structure that will be built there, so the inquiries I had is that it's a beautiful building, and weren't totally pleased with the parking structure, but then on the other hand, when you explain to folks that the reason for the parking structure is, I believe, five or six floors of new businesses are moving into Continental Towers, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
As long as debate has commenced, I would also point out that through comments that were given to us, the city staff did politely request more than once about maybe the possibility of moving the parking deck to another site that's right there on the property, and the property owner indicated that they appreciated our bringing those concerns forward, but that they would like to keep it where it is, and it's their property, and therefore, this ordinance is forward for second reading. Is there further discussion? Then seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is hereby declared passed. That brings us to the second item, which is the only item in for first reading this evening, is Item B. This ordinance, if adopted, would amend the staffing plan to change a position in the Community Development Department. Specifically, the position listed as Chief Building Officer and Assistant Community Development Director would revert to its previous title, Plan Review and Inspection Supervisor. Accordingly, the position will be reclassified from its current P1 level on the pay scale to revert back to its previous level of P2. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mr. Prina has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Prina.
I know, I'm gonna talk in a mood tonight, Mr. Mayor. I will support this, but one of the comments that we have had at the council is we'd like to see some more development in our community, so I would like to just signal that I'd like staff to be, as we're changing this, but also look at what we can do in the future of building up the Community Development Department. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So noted. Further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the clerk move this ordinance forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. That concludes all of the ordinances that are in for this evening, therefore bringing us to the warrant, the document that releases all of the funds for the obligations of the city that were incurred from March 18th through April 7th. The amount for approval is nearly $2.4 million, roughly, excuse me, roughly half of which is related to the payroll. This unusually large amount is in large part due to two bi-weekly payrolls falling within the same warrant. Is there a motion to approve the warrant as prepared by the Finance Department? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? The clerk will please call the roll.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. Quickly moving through ordinances and warrants, we come to a very long consent agenda for resolutions. It contains 13 items that run from Item D through P. Would any alderman like any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Cannon.
L and N.
Item L and N are removed. Further items to be removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Judd.
Thank you, sir. J and K.
J and K are removed from the consent agenda. Further items to be removed? Mr. Diestis.
E.
Item E is removed from the consent agenda. Further items to be removed? With five items stricken from the consent agenda, that does still leave eight. They would be Items D, F, G, H, I, M, O, and P. Therefore, the Chair asks unanimous consent to consider all eight of those resolutions as one motion. Is there any objection? Seeing none, it would therefore be in order to make a motion to approve all eight of those designated resolutions. Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. The question is, shall all eight resolutions pass? Item D would approve the purchase of police tasers. Item F would award a contract for sidewalk curb and gutter maintenance. Item G would award a contract for pavement crack sealing. Item H would be the semi-annual approval of the release of closed session minutes and tapes. Item I would authorize the purchase of a fire department staff car. Item M would approve the venture agreement amendments with Northwest Central Dispatch. Item O would approve the purchase of five new replacement ruggedized laptop computers with wireless capabilities. And Item P would award a contract for engineering services for the 2015 sanitary sewer and storm sewer rehabilitation program. Therefore, again, the question is, shall all eight resolutions pass? The clerk will please call the roll.
Baner.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, those eight resolutions are adopted. That brings the council to Item E, the first item removed. This resolution, if adopted, would approve a three-year towing contract with the city's current vendor, Hillside Towing. Four bids were received, and Hillside was the low bidder. The basic tow fee in the contract will be $95 for each of the first two years, and increase to $100 in 2017. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Mrs. Majikis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Mr. Diestis, you asked that this item be removed, you're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two things. One, isn't there something in Springfield right now that would require municipalities to rotate these type of agreements annually?
I believe that such a law has been proposed in Springfield both last year and this year. What Springfield is doing with the bills, we don't know yet, and should know by the time they adjourn, which is supposed to be May 31st, but word on the street says they're gonna be late this year for the first time in a while. So, is that a sufficient answer?
Well, I guess, what happens if this passes, and then Springfield passes a different law?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, there is a clause already written into the agreement knowing that that could be the case, and then if that's the case, then the law takes effect and will not affect this contract. Is that correct?
That is correct. It allows for the rotating of, per the chief, for additional towing groups to be allowed into this.
Mr. Diestis.
That's it. For now.
Further discussion on ordinance D? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the, excuse me, resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Diestis.
No.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
With five in favor and one opposed, this resolution is adopted. That brings the council to Item E, the first item removed. This resolution, if adopted, would approve a three-year towing contract with the city's current vendor, Hillside Towing. Four bids were received, and Hillside was the low bidder. The basic tow fee in the contract will be $95 for each of the first two years, and increase to $100 in 2017. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Mrs. Majikis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Mr. Diestis, you asked that this item be removed, you're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two things. One, isn't there something in Springfield right now that would require municipalities to rotate these type of agreements annually?
I believe that such a law has been proposed in Springfield both last year and this year. What Springfield is doing with the bills, we don't know yet, and should know by the time they adjourn, which is supposed to be May 31st, but word on the street says they're gonna be late this year for the first time in a while. So, is that a sufficient answer?
Well, I guess, what happens if this passes, and then Springfield passes a different law?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, there is a clause already written into the agreement knowing that that could be the case, and then if that's the case, then the law takes effect and will not affect this contract. Is that correct?
That is correct. It allows for the rotating of, per the chief, for additional towing groups to be allowed into this.
Mr. Diestis.
That's it. For now.
Further discussion on ordinance D?
And to spend another $19,200, I'd rather see us pave another few feet of street. Thank you.
Noted. Further discussion in this resolution? Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I mean, we talked about, at the Cal about this, and, you know, I think we have about $650 a year funded. This year, we had 70 because we took the $120 from each of them and put it in there, and then we, you know, moved 230 to make it an even million. But next year, we're back to the 650. We don't have the 120, and without, you know, upsetting S and P Moody's, you know, we can't continue to do the one-offs. And I think something was sent out where I think the motor fuel tax is going to be about $1.20 per capita, right? So, that's 25,000 people we have here, so that's 30K. We're going to be out next year. And I think Alderman Cannon's, you know, dead bang on. We already know where the streets are. We know how bad they are. To pay somebody to tell us these streets are bad, that it's irrelevant. We can only go, you know, right now, we've only funded this 650. Until we get the funding mechanism down, whether it's 850, a million, or 2 million, you know, we have to figure out what we're interested in putting in, and then we can figure out what we're going to do. But until we're going to pony up and come up with funding, there's, in my opinion, no reason to spend money, you know, finding out what streets are bad when we already know it based on the previous reports that we've had. So, thank you.
Further discussion in the resolution? Mr. Diestis?
I would throw the question to staff and say, I've heard what my peers have just said. What's the rationale for doing this?
Well, Mr. Crumstock, would you care to field that, or should we toss it to Mr. Vogt?
I'll start it. And it actually goes back into, at the council's direction at the Committee of Hall, there was a request that we solicit the proposal that's in front of you because of the future considerations of street improvements. So, that's why this is in front of you, because it was a council request at a Committee of Hall to talk to our engineers to continue looking at our street conditions. So, with that, if Mr. Vogt has any additional information, but that's a quick answer.
Mr. Vogt?
Thank you, Mayor. To add on to that, the key is to have assistance from the engineers with regards to cost estimates. The cost estimates, particularly for the streets that are of failing base, are, we are seeing that those costs are in excess of what we had previously estimated. Our intent of this program is to try to provide some better information to the council with regards to current condition as well as the cost estimating for those streets. Thank you.
Mr. Diestis, is that a sufficient answer to the question?
So, yes and no. So, we're 19,000, and they're going to come back and tell us the cost estimates are either high or low and give us more information on failing streets?
Not exactly. To clarify, it would be to provide a update for current costs on street reconstruction, partial reconstruction, as well as the patching and overlay. Certainly, if council's got concerns about the cost, we can try to segment out some of the work and just focus on the streets that are at or below a certain rating so that we don't have a full report, but could certainly segment that into just streets that we've identified over the next five or 10 years that are going to be in need.
What would be the downside of not spending this money at this point in time?
I think that the only downside would actually be is if we don't do it, we'll be opening up proposals down the line that we might make a rough estimate. It should really be at this level, but then, when you do all this analysis, it's over here. We're trying to make that rough number that we're looking at for a street program closer to where we're actually going to end up. So, this sort of bridges the gap, getting us closer to that true number the best that we can with the foundation, with all the other pieces, the base and everything else. So, again, it's money to utilize now to hopefully that our true bids future will come in closer to what we actually are spending out.
So, future, future this year or future, future years?
Future after this year.
Because we've already done this one, and that's part of, when we had the Committee of Hall discussion that we had, that we didn't have a lot of this information at this point in time. That's why the bids or proposals, when we thought the streets would be over here because this old data was coming in over here. With this study, hopefully, in future years, when we go out, we'll have a number and it will come close to where that true number is, so we have a better reflection of what we're actually doing. But again, until you actually get into the base and to all the other pieces, you might have some additional. But it's money now that we're spending for a better picture later.
And this, this money's going to get us into those bases? He's going to actually drill holes and do all that work so we know?
No, it's not to do field work with regards to holes or cores. It's simply to look at the streets based on the conditions that they're in and update the study that was last compiled in 2010 to not only remove the streets that we've repaired over the last five years, but the fact that a number of streets, due to the funding levels that we've committed to over a number of years, our list gets longer and longer in terms of street that we're spending more money on to maintain from a patching standpoint, from trying to get a handle for not only the capital improvements committee's consideration, but the council as a whole in terms of looking at what do we need in terms of revenues for the street program? If we don't have updated cost information, I fear that we're going to be running into the same thing that we've done this past year, is finding out that the costs are higher than what we anticipated back in 2010 and trying to do our own upgrades. Streets are, in many cases, getting in worse condition and costing us more. I feel that the city would be well-served to have that information going forward rather than being surprised by it when we get to it.
Well, I think any surprise is a bad surprise when it comes to this, but if the engineer's just going to go out and look and not going to physically drill holes and find out, what's the difference from we looking and saying, "It needs to be fixed," and him looking and saying, "It needs to be fixed." And if he doesn't get into the base, and if he doesn't do the field work, he's just looking and we're just looking, and we're kind of, I'm, I'm not seeing, I understand why, but I'm not seeing how this is necessarily going to get us to where you're saying we need to get.
All I can respond to in answering that is to say that if we don't do this, we will just have to continue the way we've been assessing our streets by rough estimates and then waiting until each street, each of us programmed and do the core samples then. I mean, certainly, we can go back and talk to the engineer if there's a desire to go as far as doing the core samples. I think that in some cases, or in many cases right now, that's not really what we're looking for. We're just looking for better cost estimates and based on street conditions and comparisons to other streets that we've been working on over the years, such as Elizabeth Place the last couple of years, such as Newport and Fairfax Village Streets now. We already have a little bit better handle on what we've got, and just to compare that to the other streets that are in need, that's what the proposal is for.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fred, could I ask a couple of questions then? Refresh my memory, so I want to make sure we're all on the same page here. When we had these discussions a couple of weeks ago, a couple of months ago, as a group, we identified $2.5 million worth of streets under current cost that we plan on doing this year and next year, or we would like to if we could. Are my numbers close?
I don't have the report in front of me, but yes, it probably is close based on what pending work we have and what our recommendations are.
Okay. So, again, I'm not an engineer. I don't understand all these numbers exactly, but I'm trying to think, if we're going to spend a million dollars this year, that leaves us with a million and a half dollars worth of work that as a group, we've pretty much agreed that these would be the next streets to come up next year and when after, after that. So, we're at least two years away from ever utilizing any of this information. Well, we know, we know, we know what the program is this year, right? It's pretty much set?
The program is set based on what the bids are being advertised for. Yes, we have that street.
But I mean, we know, we've identified those streets. We have them in, they're kind of in process. We have like, what, four or five different streets that are getting done, right?
No, because the bids have not been opened.
The bids are out for five streets.
Okay. But I believe Mr. Cannon's point is well taken.
Okay. That's all I'm, so I mean, my point is, we have all of this work lined up right now that we know the streets are bad. And in many of these cases, I know like on my, our own street, you already had core stuff done last, last fall because we agreed to re-engineer ahead of time.
Correct.
So, I mean, I don't think anybody would disagree with engineering ahead of time on streets next year also. But I guess the other point I would make of this, you know, we have a big issue out in Ward 1 where a lot of the streets, we find out now have the bad base. So, I guess the reverse question I would ask is, you know, someone from engineering approved all those streets to be, to be peeled and then reset eight, seven, or eight, nine years ago, whatever those did, streets like Silent Brook, you know, those streets back there. So, do we have visual inspections then? I mean, how, how did our engineers at that time miss those streets so badly that they're now crumbling, literally, less than 10 years later when they're supposed to have an expected life of 20 years? I mean, because I mean, that's what they did, is they did an inspection like this back probably 2005 or something, right?
2003, to be exact. And Alderman Cannon, those streets weren't missed. We knew what the condition of those streets were. The decision was made based on the amount of money that was required to spend, that we limited the reconstructions in that area during that period of time to two streets, Arrowood and Amanda Court. All the others were patched and overlaid. That was a conscious effort made, given the dollars that the city had and given the number of streets it needed.
You mean, we knew that at the time that those, I'm not, I'm asking, I don't know, because I wasn't around then? You mean, we realized at that point that the sub, the sub-stuff was bad and we still did it?
Absolutely. The base is made of a pozolanic material. The decision was made to do the best that we could with the dollars that we had to patch, mill, and overlay those streets.
And the engineers had given us that recommendation?
Wasn't their recommendation necessarily. It was based on the dollars that were available to do the street programs then.
Okay. I guess, again, I would just reiterate my first point. I mean, we have our program set for at least two years. I'm not against this program per se, but I don't see any benefit of doing it right now when two years from now, things might change. Thank you.
Mr. Pranam, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to summarize all this. First off, Mr. Mayor, this was done, staff did this at the direction of council. Am I correct in that statement?
It's my impression that from the March Committee of the Whole Meeting, when the request was made and the answer was given, that within about 60 to 90 days, the updated information could be given. The staff considers this to be a piece of that work, correct?
Okay. Because the concern at that meeting was, the council wanted to know what the long-term effect on some of these roads would be. Mr. Cannon brings up a point about his ward, and when that was done, I wasn't on the council at that time. However, the recommendation came and the council approved what was completed on those streets. So, what I'm trying to summarize is, the council directed staff to do this. We've been talking about what we want to see long-term, and the last update has been five years. And I realize, short-term, we can save some money at 19,2, but will it affect us long-term? And one of the things that I have brought up, that I have been frustrated with at the council, is that, you know, trying to get the information together so we can start the bidding in January and February and March and move forward with it. So, I would support this because the council gave direction to staff to do this and is part of the long-term solution that we're looking for as a city.
Further discussion in the resolution? The only thoughts that I would have to offer is, as the discussion has gone on, I think it's, I think it's far too early to be making conjectures about how next year is going to be funded. We haven't even started talking about next year, and I believe that there are a number of different avenues that will allow us to be able to hit the mark that we want to hit. And so, if it's a, there's not even enough at the moment, I regrettably disagree. I think that discussion has barely begun. Is there further discussion in this resolution? And seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Cannon?
No.
Pranam?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
No.
Baner?
No.
Diestis?
Yes.
With three in favor and three opposed, that is a tie vote. The chair's vote is aye. Therefore, this resolution is adopted. The next item on the agenda is Item N. You'll pardon me for one moment? Oh, that's not a breakable tie, Mr. Alderman? If it is not a breakable tie on the advice of the city attorney, then therefore, the vote reverts back to three to three, and lacking a majority, it fails. Thank you for the reminder. That brings us to Item N. This resolution, if adopted, would approve a contract with Tria Architecture of Burr Ridge, Illinois, to provide a comprehensive assessment of the physical condition of the old Public Works Building. The amount of the contract is nearly $14,000, and the funds will be paid from the Building and Land Fund. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Mr. Diestis has made the motion and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Cannon, you asked that this be polled. You're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On December 1, 2010, our council had asked a report to be done on that building, and to my knowledge, most of the things that were talked about in this report that needed to be repaired have not been repaired. In fairness to Public Works, they've done everything they possibly could to kind of keep that thing together down there. Until we come to the conclusion as to what we want to do and make a firm decision, I don't see spending almost $14,000 to review a building that almost everybody at this table would agree is a troubled building at minimum. I don't think another report's going to give us any more information than what we need to decide that the building's crumbling and needs to be replaced. This is my opinion, I understand, but I just can't see spending $13,000 in this 13-8 and get information that we already know. Anybody that walks down there, doesn't have to be in the building industry to realize that the building's in bad, bad shape and only getting worse. And most of the things that we did in this report that was authorized by the, by the city council, we haven't even done most of those things. So, I just don't understand why we would even want to spend any more money. We all know it's a bad thing. So, I'm totally against this. Thank you.
Further discussion in the resolution? Mr. Baner?
Thank you. I agree with Alderman Cannon. I think if we spend more money on this, it's, it is the epitome of throwing good money after bad, and so I won't support it either. Thank you.
Mrs. Majikis?
Thank you, Mayor. Then I have a, I have a question. We don't spend money on this. If my recollection is correct, at a Cal meeting months ago, probably last summer, maybe even? I don't know, we had talked about putting some money into this building to kind of, I hate to say band-aid it, but to do some work over there to...didn't we agree to that? And that work we talked about doing the minimal that we could do right now to give us a few years on the...I think it was like a five-year plan or something like that? Oh, sorry. Like a five-year plan or something like that we had talked about?
Mr. Vogt.
Does that sound familiar?
That's generally my recollection...excuse me. It's generally my recollection, and I believe that's one of the reasons why there are funds in the budget this year to do what is being recommended over a multi-year period.
So, this, then, having this done would help us to determine what we're going to do that we budgeted for this year on that building?
Correct, as well as to give us updated information from the 2010 assessment that was done most recently to assist in that decision-making in terms of what work needs to be done or what should be done and what priority.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion. Mr. Cannon.
Can I ask Mr. Vogt some questions, is there?
Certainly.
Fred, could you just give me a general idea? I think you guys have already done an admirable job keeping, trying to keep that building going. Out of all, most of the things that are reported in this report, in your opinion, about how much of that work has been accomplished to bring this, to do, to fix the things that they talked about in this report?
Virtually nothing on the roofs or on the masonry, other than the most urgent of needs if we've had leaks to respond to. But no major work.
So, I mean, I don't understand why we would want to spend more money when we haven't even done the work that we requested five years ago to get done. We haven't even done that work yet. So, why would we want to report to even get more further work to have done when we don't have that much money budgeted for it? Yes, we have some money budgeted this year, and we have that, we're trying to get that $125,000 grant to repair the roof, not to fix the roof, to repair part of it. I just don't understand why we want to keep on spending money like this. We know it's a bad building. We haven't done the things that we know that needed to be done. It's just a waste of 13-8. Thanks.
Well, I believe since that was phrased in the form of a question, to do fairness to the staff, there are any number of things that can change over the course of five years. And working off a five-year-old document when maybe something else has come into play, it doesn't even need to be a worse thing than anything that's in that report. It can be anything that changes the sequence in which the work should be done. I'm not a construction guy either, but I know enough to know that the sequence of work is remarkably important. And I think in respect to the staff, they've prepared this, I'm assuming, figuring that five years is quite a long time, and that if the sequence has worked, the sequence of work has changed, we might be spending money doing stuff that's out of sequence, find out later that because it was out of sequence, it created bigger problems and may end up spending more money. I believe that in fairness to the people who present these documents for us, they don't do things with no reason. Those are my thoughts. Mr. Pranah.
I do agree with Mr. Cannon. I don't want to spend more money on this building. However, in reflecting on what the mayor has just said, I know that we're not going to replace this building tomorrow or this year or next year because with our discussions that we had earlier, we...the direction that we were giving from council, and Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we wanted to keep this going for two or three or four years. We knew it was not going to be a permanent fix, but we wanted to keep it a viable building. So, I think that's the purpose for this document, and the fact is that, yes, there's probably things that we may have changed that we don't want to fix, and there are things that probably need to be fixed so that we can just keep it going because I...we have a number of things coming before this council, and since we don't have the money to replace this building in the next year, two, or three years, as was the discussion of council, I would vote to approve this tonight.
Further discussion. Mrs. Majikis.
Thank you. So, if this didn't pass, I guess I don't know who I'm asking this to, Mr. Vogt or...so, whoever wants to answer. If this didn't pass, what then would, how would we proceed on that building? We just pick what we think is the worst thing to fix?
With the report as the most recent information we have, correct?
Well, given the pending grant application through the county, until we learn if we are successful in getting monies and how much, I would likely recommend sitting tight and not doing anything with it. But once we, if we do learn that we have some grant money and opportunity to prioritize the roofing, initially, our thoughts were, well, it's kind of obvious you start at the top and work down. You fix the roof and all the leakage to save the others. In discussions over several months informally with some architects, so that may not necessarily be the wisest thing to do. There may be some masonry work and wall work that needs to be done either in conjunction with the roof repairs or depending on how much roof we repair. And that's one of the reasons why we pursued the proposals to get this work done now in advance of finding that out. We certainly can wait, but if we do get grant money for the roof, I'd be coming back some later date, probably towards the end of this year, to do the same task.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Deastis.
So, Mr. Vogt, would it make sense then to just postpone this until we find out if we get the grant money? And then, once we get the grant money, bring this back up for a vote? Because what you're saying makes a lot of sense, but if we don't get the grant money, then there's almost not as urgent a need for this report, and we can work off the other report. But if we do get the grant money, then it becomes a timely thing to do this at that point?
Other than for the structural concerns of the building, I would say, yes, it certainly could wait. It certainly could wait even with that unless something develops or becomes troubling or something that needs immediate repairs, that we would want to architects' assistance. We don't have architects on staff, and that's why we rely on consultants to do this kind of work and, you know, not only in terms of the scheduling, but to advise us of what work needs to be done or how bad something is or how bad something isn't with regards to the components of the building.
So, then, Mr. Mayor, I guess, having heard that, would a motion to table, a motion to postpone be in order at this point?
Well, unfortunately, I believe neither would. I believe, first of all, tabling is not an appropriate motion under these circumstances. And a motion to postpone, if we were going to go to the next council meeting and arguably the meeting after that, that's about the extent that we can push something out because it should be postponed to a certain time. I believe if that was somebody's desire and there's not a motion to get that done tonight, somebody just needs to be in a position to move to reconsider later on down the road. Further discussion. Then seeing no further discussion, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Pranah?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
No.
Banjer?
No.
Deastis?
No.
Cannon?
No.
With two in favor and four opposed, this resolution fails. That concludes the resolution portion of this evening, and now I've got to scroll, scroll, scroll to get to the proclamations portion. Just one moment, please. Thank you. Under proclamations, there is an annual proclamation that we do here because we participate in this usually in some form or another through our Public Works Department and through our environmental subcommittee of the Urban Affairs Committee. And so, among the noteworthy whereas clauses in this particular resolution this year, this is actually 143 years that in some way, shape, or form consistently, the United States of America has been recognizing this Arbor Day that we set up as a way to try to bring the trees back to the original places that were cutting them down to make these new-fangled things called cities. And so, I think everybody who lives in a city today appreciates the plantings wherever we can get them. And so, therefore, I, Tom Rooney, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Rolling Meadows, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 24th, 2015, as Arbor Day in the city of Rolling Meadows. That is the only proclamation in this evening, and there are no appointments, but I just give the council a forewarning that the next meeting will be the Appointment Palooza that we do once a year with all of the different terms expiring for the different commissions. And we throw the library board in as well, even though theirs don't technically expire until June. And so, there'll be a whole slew of annual appointments at the next meeting. Does the city clerk have a report?
The election is over. I congratulate all the winners.
Thank you for that report.
Thank you very much.
Under city staff reports, we start with Mr. Crumstock and the community items of interest.
I actually have six items that I want to mention. Just a friendly reminder that we do say is that yard waste collection and street sweeping has commenced throughout the city. If you have additional questions about how something should be out at the curb or how it should be cut, please contact Public Works at 847-963-0500 or visit the city webpage. Obviously, as what was just mentioned in the proclamation, Earth Day activities are set for April 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. For additional information, please contact the Public Works again. They'll give you more about what they're doing this year and more events that are out there. We do do some of our Earth Day events and Arbor Day events and some other items with schools, but the main event that we have for Earth Day activities deals with the creek, and that's again, April 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Then, we have May 16th, that's coming up. That's Saturday. We have the Pancake Breakfast that goes from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and obviously, the fire department will be doing the cooking again, and that is through the Golden Years Council. The location is Park Central at 3,000 Central Road. The cost, if purchased in advance, is $5 for adults and $4 for children under the age of 12. If you do walk-ins, it's $6 for an adult, $5 for the children under 12. And again, that's from 8:00 to 11:00, but starting at 9:00 a.m. and going to 2:00 p.m., the Garden Club Hometown Plant and Craft Sale will also be at that point. You have to walk from one building to the next building, and that one's 3,200 Central Road. And again, at the Public Works Building, you can see all kinds of vegetation, other kinds of crafts, other kinds of plants, other things that you would like to know about. But also, as you walk from Park Central over to the Public Works Building, you walk right by the Historic Museum, and that's 3,100 Central Road. They will also be doing their annual open house on that day, and again, that's Saturday, May 16th. They're going to be doing it at the same time as the Garden Club, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then, the final one that we do around this time is a reminder that the April Electronic News and Views, or what we call our E-News and Views, is actually on our website. So, with that, those are the six items of interest that we have for this meeting.
Then next would be purchase orders over $2,500. Also, Mr. Crumstock?
There's actually two of them that were on the list, and both of them deal with Public Works, so nothing really extraordinary.
Then the third item under staff reports is the 60th Anniversary Update. Ms. Sezak.
Thank you, Mayor Rooney. Oops, sorry. A dinner will be held to honor area veterans on Friday evening, May 22nd. Please call City Hall to reserve your tickets if you would like to attend. The annual Memorial Day Parade will take place on Saturday, May 23rd at 11:00 a.m. starting at the downtown fire station on Meadow Drive. At the end of the parade, a memorial ceremony will take place at 11:30 at the Carolan Tower on Kirchhoff. Join the city to honor our loyal veterans and to celebrate community pride. On that same day, May 23rd, will be our first farmers and food trucks of the season. New food trucks, more vendors, more kid activities, and raffles will be featured at the City Hall parking lot from 10:00 to 2:00, once again, that Saturday on May 23rd. Next, the city and park district will pair up to delight ice cream lovers of all ages. Join us for a family-friendly event on Saturday, May 30th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the Community Center Playground. There will be activities and treats for the kids, including a balloon twister, face painting, et cetera. We hope to see you there. Friday evenings are busy here in downtown Rolling Meadows with the Weekly Cruise Night. This year, the city will join in the fun on Friday, June 19th, with the farmers and food trucks at the Community Church's parking lot. Kirchhoff will be blocked off between the two churches, resulting in a street party from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. with food trucks, farmers, market vendors, law enforcement vehicles, music, and many fun family activities. The next week, a new outdoor event will take place this year near the creek at Kimball Hill Park. On Friday evening, June 26th, the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce and the city will host Wine Down by the Creek. From 5:30 to 11:30 p.m., this event will feature two bands, food trucks, plus wine and beer from local sources. So, bring your lawn chair, get a babysitter, and join us for an evening of music in our beautiful park. Other events for the 2000 year tentatively include our annual July 4th parade and fireworks, a family tailgating party on Saturday, July 18th, at the Community Center parking lot, and of course, the annual tree lighting on Thursday, December 3rd, spiced up with fireworks and a spaghetti dinner at the Firehouse. Stay in touch with the city website and the community news and views for more updates on 60th events throughout the year. Thank you.
Then that leaves one more staff report, the community of the whole agenda for next week. Mr. Crumstock?
Currently, we have five items that are being worked on. The first one is elected officials training. City Attorney Jim McCall will be doing a PowerPoint presentation, and I just wanted to see his reaction on that one. But every two years, we do do the elected officials' training and everything like that. We do have to go through that with everything else. He does give you a guide to read, so, you know, he has to work on that. We do have a CARLOT discussion that was from a past committee, the whole discussion that we were talking about and old ordinance and bringing that back. Update on COLA's Employee Advisory Committee discussion, and then a fire department resource sharing update for the city council.
So, Mr. Crumstock, I'm just curious. Are you just kidding Mr. McCall about a PowerPoint, or are you kidding him about doing it? Because I know that Tom Bastian has usually been our representative for this.
I've been trying to get him to do a PowerPoint. You know, we got this new system and a few slides and...
I think this calls for a speech.
I think with the pain look on Mr. McCall's face, maybe we'll just let him off the hook. And Mr. McCall, will you be doing the presentation this year?
I'd be happy to do the presentation. With all the power.
I can tell you're thrilled. All right.
Do I do it first or what?
Then with that being the report of the agenda, is there anything on the agenda? All right, then, matters not on the agenda this evening. Are there any matters not on the agenda? Mr. Cannon.
I'd just like to make a quick shout-out to, you know, Barry Crumstock has led Lori and a lot of the other staff to do some nice things for us coming up in this year, and I think I'd like to just point out Lori has been killing herself doing some really nice things. I think we really got some exciting social events this year for the first time in a really long time. I know a lot of the other staff have helped, and people are realizing that it's going to be a great year. Hence, thanks for all your extra efforts.
Here, here. Further matters not on the agenda. Seeing none, there is a request to go into closed session this evening to discuss an item of personnel that falls under subsection C-1 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. It does require a formal motion and a roll call vote. Is there a motion to go into closed session to discuss one personnel item? Mr. Banjer has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the council enter closed session? The clerk will please call the roll.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Banjer?
Yes.
Deastis?
No.
Cannon?